And I'll read the line acknowledgement first. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located in Treaty Twenty, Mishisagik territory and in the traditional territory of the Mishisagik and Chipua nation. Collecting known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Curve Lake, Rama, Ayawata, Alderweireld, Skugog, Bozolaid, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as stewards of its land waters. Since time immemorial. Thank you. Could I have a motion please to adopt the agenda unless there are any changes anybody would like to make? Moved by, oh. Oh, there it is.
Hi Jen.
We just started Jen, so you're not missing anything. Moved by. Adele. Seconded by. Jackie. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. No changes. We're now going to move to the consent agenda. There are four items, I think, on the consent agenda. Which are the adoption of the draft minute for the last meeting. Which I will have a motion for. The Life Chief Librarians Report. The Circulation. Excuse me, Circulation District Committee Reports. Any questions on the consent agenda? Could I have a motion to move the minutes then of September thirteenth? And Melanie, if I do something wrong, tell me, okay? Moved by. No, that's not right. These are for the. I have a motion for the October eleventh regular meeting.
We adopted the general.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there should be ones for September nine minutes.
You have to consent to judge one. Sorry, I have to. I have a motion for the consent. Jen, I missed that one. Is that right, Melanie?
Yes.
Melanie, you're on mute.
Okay, put the consent, Jen, I can pass on. Hand up, so we'll put her down there.
So one. Yeah, so one is the adoption and the second one is the consent.
Yeah, okay.
Seconded by who? Who's been seconded?
Paul, Jen, Paul. Sorry about that, Jen. Agenda approved, they consent to Jennifer. Okay.
And we have Cease has joined us.
Hi, Cease, how are you?
Very good, thanks.
Did you take a helicopter home? Like get on that fast?
No, we're still in the office here.
Okay.
Jennifer's with me.
Thank you. I think Walt is on his way, we understood.
All right. Is there any pecuniary interest anybody has to declare? Okay. All right, so we're ready to go. Chris?
All right.
Let's get into the.
The financial report is, yup, is after the consent agenda.
Yeah, I got it.
You want to do that? Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, all of the large purchases for the year have been made. With the exception of things like a replacement iPhone that's coming. For the most part, we're on track. We're no doubt going to be enjoying a surplus from the third year in a row. Mainly because of my departure, with my wages and my benefits that come along with that. So that's something to look forward to in some sense, although we did a fairly good job overall this year, as I'll talk about in the budget of spending on capital expenses. So roughly about twenty thousand was spent on the various projects we asked for, for reserve money. Replacement of furniture, vinyl additions to signage, van. Doors and lockers. And then, of course, the capital purchase, the big one was the van.
I saw it the other day.
Yeah, so it's just out here.
It's fun driving around. Oh, good, it's great.
Yeah, it's really exciting when you see it. And live. So we're, we're good, we're in good shape for what we expected to spend this year. But like I said, there'll probably be twenty, twenty-five thousand left over for surplus at this point, projection. And then, I mean. It's more natural for me to talk about some of the things in the actual budget chat, which is after the, after this. So are there any questions about the monthly financial report?
Thank you. May I have a mover and second please? Moved by Lisa. Seconded by.
Jen.
Jen. Thank you, Jen. Harry.
You.
What he's asking, is there anybody objectively put their hand up and say, I'm doing? All right. I used to do it on Zoom, not a mover and second, or I'd say any objection would be non-ice carry. That's what, that's what I used to do. Because there were so many people on Zoom, it was hard to see all their hands. Okay, Chris. Twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay, there's a step seven, business arising from the minutes. All right, yes, we're still writing new business. All right, so it's always very exciting to launch a new budget because it represents forward thinking and a new year to come. And although it looks like just numbers on a page, there are several hours of discussion with every member of the admin team. Planning about what their expectations are and their needs. And for the most part, everyone got what they needed and wanted in terms of expectations for next year. And we were able to do that by tweaking with now what we know over two years. What can go down and what can go up accordingly. And so it was a bit like an equalizer on a stereo this time. But we were able to make dreams come true for Hillary, for example, with programming. We found fifteen hundred dollars to bolster her budget for an annual license to show films publicly and that has allowed us to make a partnership with in the cultural center. And now we host on P A days a film that kids can vote for online or in the branches and then a reason to bring them into the library. Maybe they only watch an hour of the movie, but then they're in there with their family and they hang out and eat popcorn and grab some books. So we like to find new things and everyone has sort of a pitch for their department per se. So everything's worked out in that sense. I will remind you what I've said for the last two years, that every budget is iterative, mainly because there's lots of factors and features that will change with the numbers over time as we get closer to when county council approves the figure. I don't expect that you would want to accept or approve this budget at this point because I think the numbers aren't all in. When I input the information that we know about the library and that's about seventy percent of all the numbers in our budget for all the line items. There's about thirty percent outstanding that the county's locked down. So for example. Yep. Hi, Walt. Thanks for coming. Now we heard. Welcome. We're just on the budget. Well, Jen. Also, I'm just, I actually be really. Okay. Not very. Good morning. I'm glad you're here for the budget part.
You're here. Good to see you.
So it's iterative in the sense that the thirty percent of what goes into the budget draft is locked down by county councils. So finance is putting those numbers in on our behalf. And just before, like after this package was created, I learned that the estimate for benefits became more clear. So it's going to go up in twenty twenty-four from what you saw on your line item. This is personal health, or sorry, benefits for one zero zero two zero one, that line. Currently, it's sitting at two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. And that will actually go up, as far as we know, to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. So ultimately, there's some things out of our control, namely the cost of insurance year to year. The benefits in this case, as January said, that they're going to correct for inflation. And we could expect about five percent, which that is more or less what that figure. And then the other one is cost of living and the finance department is withholding those numbers. What you see in here right now are placeholders. Only because we would normally tie our cost of living increases at the library to the Q B union when they negotiate the collective agreement. So that's going to be done closer to January. So like I said, every year we get into the situation where the numbers can change over four months. Because we started in August to draft this. Our numbers are mostly in now. I think everything from our vendors, our consortium, about estimates, pay from software is all legitimate numbers. So, but like I said, you might want to just hold off from approving it until you see.
Yeah, actually, the motion is, is good. And it says we resolved at the Hellburn County Library, right? I don't know, H C P L draft budget, it doesn't say approver.
Right. You just. Yeah, it's accepting for information. Yeah, and so that's, that's my recommendation, if you want to follow that and.
And when, when will it come back? Full document.
So, I mean, even in the November meeting, we'll have more numbers and things like insurance will be worked out. What I put in for insurance is an estimate based on what I was told to expect, which was a fifteen percent increase. And that's been par for the course for the last couple of years. I believe to quote the director of corporate finance, when, when will the madness end? Like, how can this one industry have increases of fifteen percent year over year when nothing else in the library gets to go up that? So. But again, we're beholden to what our shared services are. Everything gets divided, I understand, through all the departments across the county and get our figure put in.
Yeah.
So you'll want to keep an eye on what, like this is your, sort of your benchmark.
Starting point.
Starting point. And then you can compare to see what happened a little later. And so I thought I would just kind of go through a few highlights for what the library discovered with our numbers. Overall, the numbers appear lower comparatively per our expenses compared to last year only because there's no van and furniture built into this budget. Obviously, we had posed our funds out, so they show up in revenues. And they're showing up as expenses. So our budget looks a lot higher than last, last year than it will is coming here. So far, we were not asking for any massive capital purchases other than new computers and the books, obviously. But, you know, halfway through the year, as we have done in the past, we might come to you with a proposal and some options for things to use reserve money for over time as our needs change through the mid-year point. And that'll be up to the, the new CEO and, and the admin team to come back about that. But for, for now, there's been no substantial changes to increase in library budget on our end. The exception, as I mentioned, is the computer equipment. This is part of the annual mapping out over a ten-year period by the county I T that tells us, you know, we need computers in, say, year four and year nine. So we, we, we plan for that. It's a ten-year asset management plan that we follow. So last year, we actually had a higher spending on computer infrastructure and this year it's kind of a modest, moderate amount. And one difference from the past is that I, I got a better understanding about what can be considered capital expenditures. So for example, iPads and iPhones are not considered capital. You can't write it off in the same way that you can laptops and desktop computers. So where it shows up on the budget is slightly different in the, in the, like the books, there's a capital line now for computers.
It's depreciation that would drive that.
Oh, yeah, over four or five years. So the numbers are just showing up in different places, but they all add up to what they would have been similar to last year. In terms of revenues for next year, I put in a more ambitious number only because the friends have had a phenomenal year this year. They also have yet a gala, which is currently sold out, if not almost sold out. The ticket sales alone will result in about three thousand dollars in revenue from that event. So they've been really generous and we are going to meet our mark for donations and other revenue, thanks to that, the friends. But also due to money that's been coming in almost regularly now from the community funeral home. Because the library is listed as an option for giving in expression of sympathy. And that's a really wonderful thing because quite by surprise, Dwayne Lloyd will send money over to the library and then we'll notice in our Canada helps and we have a digital record of money coming in as well. So people are thinking about the library more, we're more in a public eye in that sense, and the donations are starting to come back. So we hit them, we're going to hit the mark in twenty twenty-three because it was a good year for friends and these other reasons. So I've, I've raised that number a little bit more. I'm pleased to tell you that the friends, since I met them at the last meeting, have new members joining. So there's new energy and like, at one point, I wondered if, you know, they might slow things down a little bit, but actually they're planning lots of great stuff to come for twenty twenty-four. A, a, a wonderful thing happened in that we, you'll notice in the first line of expenses, every year we transfer six thousand dollars to reserve from our funds. And that's to service the A M P that I was telling you about, the asset management plan. Because we know that every year we're going to have to upgrade some type of computer or hardware or even just keyboards. That money has been flowing for two years into an account that finance holds for us. But because I was new and the director, I believe the director of corporate finance was new in her role. Somehow it was missed that we needed to put that money back into the library for the spending part of the year. So the good news is that those two installments that were unused can be applied in twenty twenty-four to help offset the cost of our computers that we're using this year. So that's twelve thousand dollars in total. Aaron can get the things that we need. The, like I said, the placeholder numbers, like these are very important numbers such as wages and benefits, because this is the lion's share of where a budget goes. Of course, the labor component is the biggest part. So that number of one point eight three is just an estimate based on last year plus a marginal one point seven five percent increase over that. So what will change is that Q B negotiations will take place. The, the board, your next step will be the delete rate as to whether you want to accept and follow in step as we have in the past, the collective agreements with the union environment. So like I said, that number is just a placeholder from now. There are three new lines this year and it's because it makes a lot of sense for us to separate a vehicle, the new van we have. So there's three lines. Vehicle parts, repairs and maintenance, vehicle licenses and vehicle fuel. And this will just be the first time it shows up in the budget and it'll be a good way to talk about in the future, years' time, what it costs to run a vehicle from year to year. So it also helps us because we have our own Visa card now for that vehicle for gas and other related expenses. So it can all be tracked in one location. And that's now separate from the county vehicle we used to borrow, as well as the miles the staff using for conferences, driving between branches and, and the day-to-day operations. The, I built into the mileage a slight increase anticipating that the C R A rate in this time of impressive inflation will likely go up again in twenty twenty-four. As you'll recall, we went from sixty-one cents to sixty-eight cents per kilometer in one year and that we didn't plan for that. So this kind of built in, built in a little bit more of that. So overall, the, the vehicle estimates are based on only six or seven weeks of having on the van. So that data is, I've extrapolated it as best I could, but it might be a little off. By Christmas, you'll know more. By a year from now, you'll know exactly what it costs to run the van on average. And then you can scale up accordingly to run programs and, and use it for all the other purposes. But I had to start somewhere and, you know, we, we didn't want to underestimate the cost of running a vehicle because it is new for us and things like tires I built in for vehicle parts and maintenance. I don't think we're going to need tires in the first twenty-four months. But you never know if you have, you know, a blown tire or something happens. So just, it's just kind of future-proofing it a little bit. But like I said, with capital expenses, these can be written off over time. So the van will certainly help with that. And then.
Good question. Yeah, a question about the van and see quickly what it is, or is it, like, do we, is there some need for future for winter tires?
Yeah.
Or snow ice or something like that?
It's a great question. It's the first question we asked the rep when we were standing in the parking lot the day we, we got the van. And it's because the tires look very heavy duty and they are in fact ten-belt tires. They're Continentals that are very rugged. So they're all seasons with the, the snow backbone. And the rep said that contractors that are buying it are, are still using these vans on, as long as they're on the back road on a muddy icy hill. He said that everyone has chosen not to upgrade to the winter tires and that likely, given that we stick to the main roads for the most part, we should be okay. Having said that, when we do make a decision to upgrade to a second set of tires, there is storage and then changing over. And also the fact that you have to replace the sensors in the actual rim I didn't know about when you change to a different set of winter tires. So if you were to put in, you know, like an amount like fifteen hundred dollars a year for tires and just kind of keep it in there, like it's, it's a good practice probably because you never know what to expect for expenses. We're going to spend a little bit of that money this year just on outfitting the interior of the van. In fact, Bruce is working on that as we speak, one of the courier drivers, to put a plywood on the wall so that it doesn't, nothing flies through the van and then scenario that could puncture the metal from the inside. Okay, so good question. We're okay for, for as far as I know for two years minimum. And then the county roads department, like we have a good relationship with them because we were borrowing the van. Previously, the county. So they can help advise and do basic work. Should it be required over time, they recommended going back to Ford for the duration of warranty as recommended with the new vehicle to have those oil changes done on schedule and whatnot. And they're expecting us back for those reasons. And then the drivers are logging everything like they used to and know to call the one eight hundred number for Ford if anything happens to it. So I, I feel like I'm, I'm leaving this in good shape, but you're going to want to monitor these numbers in the future because we don't honestly know what impacts of gas going up could be and how shakes out. Last year, as you'll recall, we increased the book budget by seven percent and that was because we were told that we could expect inflation affecting the print and publishing world of up to eleven percent. So we, we kind of hedged our bets and that worked out really well. We were able to purchase a lot of, of new books throughout this year, including this fall. Cheryl said that with the money that we've received for Evergreen Collection, upgrades to the climate change collection, upgrades to the mental health and wellbeing collection. And the book club says that we just, we're going to be receiving money from the friends. For those donation through volunteer work has, have helped us offset costs and we're able to keep purchasing at the same rate that we hoped to. So the book budget will stay the same for twenty twenty-four. At one eighteen change. So all of the big expenses on the library side are accounted for and there's room for everything that we, we need. The exception is about the next point, eight point two, which is a monthly pool request for increasing the programming hours and but before we go there, I just wanted to ask if anyone had questions.
Any questions on this? I have a motion, I have a mover, Adele, sorry.
Oh, I do, sorry, yeah. Is, have you considered in the budget that the Dorset branch may open next year and you would need to increase wages? To cover that because this year hasn't had any wages for Dorset.
Yeah, it's a fine question. I was just on the Thanksgiving weekend cheered to see the developments that are happening in Dorset with the backhoe upfront and the fencing. So it is on its way. I understand through the Algonquin Highlands Communications Department that there's regular updates about this work. So it appears to me to be on track and that's really exciting. Your, the, the short answer is, is no, I haven't. Because we don't really know yet and it's still to be worked out partly with the board, but also with Algonquin Highlands Council about what does the design plan look like? Do we have a space in that location, hopefully? And then if so, what does our service delivery model look like? And that's why today I was bringing a copy of the Arublo Fourth Guidelines because it talks about the service delivery. So this, I, I really feel that you may want to have a special meeting before the snow flies or before the new year about what our commitment might be and what Algonquin Highlands Council's commitment might be to making a space for us. If that's a goal and we can have, you know, even like an airport kiosk sized space, we would want to staff it with a person like, like a branch. And, and I can, like I can leave numbers for what that looks like if you, you know, if it was fifteen hours a week or if it was eighteen hours a week, right?
Is there then, if, if you're not sure that Dorset would open next year, is there any consideration or could there be consideration given to increasing the stand-up library hours? And thus the wages?
Yeah, so what, in my notes for, I'm, I'm up to twenty-five pages for my succession document. And one of the reasons why it's important is to cover things like all the loose ends. Such as, we talked last time with Cease about unknowns for library service in eastern part of the, of the library system. So with that up in the air and with the excitement of Dorset coming together, there is going to be a window of time when we need to sit down create a service delivery committee, I believe. We, we had them in the past. It's probably been eight or ten years since I think Liz was on the council or the committee and a number of other board members. And at that point, you, you just make a plan for, it's kind of like a strategic plan for what library service looks like in your community. You balance that out with what was recommended in terms of size and locations and go from there. So I, I, I don't know when you want to do that, but like perhaps with, you know, Jen's guidance and information, it would be a, a good thing to get that ad hoc committee going and then kind of look at it because then you could make changes based on, you know, what's needed in the space, buying books and films or computers based on our reserve funds. So that's covered. Capital expenditures, no problem. And then find out what, you know, perhaps the council can offer as well for, you know, floor covering and. Jen, do you have any comments?
Yeah, yeah. And thanks very much, Adele, for raising that. Those, those are important questions in my mind, too. Yeah, I think that sounds absolutely right, that we form a little group to, to start looking at these, these questions that everyone will need some answers to, even if they're only not provisional, but sort of estimates so that we've got something to work with moving forward. I'd like to nail down what space in the building could be used to at least get a floor plan, which will go a distance to figuring out what kind of services we could put there. Also discussing, apart from that, that physical space, what kind of programming we might be able to bring using other parts of the building or, you know, you, who knows? There's also an outdoor pavilion. So it's more than just that physical space that we would have to think about when it comes to staff timing and service models, et cetera. So that's key. The, the one thing that I, I'm thinking of just at the minute is we will be going into our budgeting process in Algonquin Highlands fairly soon. In November, we will have our Projects and Priorities Day, which is really just the time when staff bring their big ticket items to council's attention, not for any decision-making reason, but just so that we're aware of what's coming through the hopper. And then final decisions will be discussed in February. So it sounds like November might be too, you know, quite quick. But what I'm, I might do is, is flag that there is this conversation afoot on the board and, you know, propose the working group or whatever it might be. And then perhaps by February, we will have something, even if it's like a little placeholder, a budgetary placeholder for things that we know we would have to get done, that we would require council's commitment on in order to continue moving forward for this financial year. So those, those would just be my, my thoughts there. That, that February, if we're going to ask for anything for this year, February is the, the month that we've got to have that more or less figured out by.
Jen, thank you. Could, could we ask you then to kind of be the trigger on this? When you think you should sit down as a group? We'll get a little group like, like we mentioned, like Adele mentioned, or you did. And you signal us it's time to start working a little bit on this.
Well, you know, I, I leave it back to you as chair to, to say, but is this, would, would today be the, the, the day that we might figure out who could be on that group and actually decide that group from our side so that I can, I can take something tangible to council?
Yeah, we can do that from our end for sure. Yeah, we can do that from our end for sure. I just I what I'm more interested in is. At what point does the committee have to do something to meet your deadlines?
Yeah, 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 for sure. Um, so uh yes, I certainly if we. If we can pinpoint the folk who would want to be on that committee from the board's end now, I can certainly start bringing information back. Um. I'll chat with the CEO.
Perfect, okay. Should we take a second and Adele, you're interested, I assume?
I am, yes.
Anybody else? Andrea, she'll help us out. And of course, Jen will be there. So is that is that committee okay, Jen, you, Adele and and Andrea?
Yeah, if that works within.
And Andrea is gonna be acting CEO in a couple of weeks anyway, so we might as well get her involved.
Yeah, great. Great, love it.
In addition to the resources for the group to use other than this, um I did leave a substantial binder uh with Andrea of the Service Delivery Committee from last time. So there's probably some little treasures in there that you might wanna check out and just see what was decided back in the day. Okay, this is a good start.
Okay, perfect. There's your committee.
Great, thank you.
Who's who's gonna be in charge of the committee? Adele, do that. Jackie?
In charge of the committee?
You need a you need a chair of the committee or you guys, the three of you just figure it out.
I guess we'll just figure it out.
Why don't you, why don't we let Andrea kind of coordinate when you would. Pull your dates and everything like that. How's that? Okay, great, done.
Okay, Chris. So we're still on the questions if anyone has budget uh related questions.
So um page two and the I don't need answers um on these right away because it's a bit of a pop quiz. Well, I don't, I know you want to be answered. But on page two, account number four two zero zero six, so it's the E resources.
Yes.
I see that's gone down by twenty percent and I'm wondering if that's because you're offering resources for summer now free.
No, that's quite a fair question.
And yeah, the reason for the question is it's like E resources are like books on a shelf, um but part of the offerings of a library.
Yes, no, uh, nothing's been cut. In fact, we're adding uh new things all the time. We were talking about adding Bitwarden, which is a. A security um cipher passwords. Um, but uh no, the um. One of the features of this budget is numbers got divided and put into other categories. So you'll notice that can be computer equipment. Parts and equipment uh four two oh oh two zero zero two zero three is a huge increase there, and that's because um. The iPad purchases that were recommended for this year are gonna go there. Um, but with um E resources, I'll follow up on where the other three thousand dollars went, but it didn't go down. Um, I if I recall, like Aaron sent me a spreadsheet and then Mike Marsh from the county helped me. Figure out which ones go where.
Yeah, I yeah, I I um I understand things get moved, but then when we're looking at a budget, it's nice to know. Um, but we're not, we're not playing, well, it wouldn't be a shell game, but you know what I mean, that things things get moved and you go, then you don't know. Is it a decrease or not? Um, also, what, for example, automation, just two lines down. Um, went from two twenty thousand to fifteen hundred.
I had a quick answer for that one. So in the past, we were putting computer purchases up in in automation. We got what we knew we were gonna spend, but. Uh, now we learned that we could write them off over the five years. So then now they're down in um. Very bottom, which is uh capital purchases of hardware. So you'll see there's twelve thousand dollars there. Um, and that twelve thousand would be offset by the money that we we have coming in from the church.
Right, so that's not a draw on the county anymore this current year.
We the county doesn't, like, we pay for all of our own.
Right.
Stuff, but we just have a way to fund it directly now.
Right. Um, and then I saw um. Down the page fifteen oh one, the mileage.
Yes, yes.
Now down quite a bit.
Yeah.
And is that staff mileage?
So yeah, in the past, in twenty twenty three, when it was fourteen thousand five, that was the combined combined total of all the staff. Plus the the van charges we were getting from the county. And I I created a three line of the vehicle. So they they're separated. There's four lines for um station in our in our library now.
Yeah.
Um, but as I was explaining before, we have a card that's tied to expenses for the van. It's easier to track them in its own separate spot. Whereas with sending the staff off to trips and um uh training and whatnot and between the branches. That's a a a estimated not estimated number that we trust, but we know that it's not much every year.
Okay, and then I guess probably uh page three. Four five zero zero two oh four, the small tools and equipment.
Yeah.
Is gone.
Yeah, so when we asked you uh the board for uh twenty thousand dollars to buy furniture, upgrade the children's department and do signage. Um, finance didn't know where to put the spending, so we just created a line.
Okay.
So we have the twenty thousand going in in revenues from reserve. We had to call it something and because it was for three things. Using for the cash payable lady, so she just put it in this one line. But because we we spent the twenty, we'll have spent the twenty thousand by the end of. The year, it's it's gone anyway.
Okay.
A good question. These are very, you you're noticing great details.
Yeah, so yeah, and then of course, my only concern would be that I'm I'm always about um. Asking for more hours for branches to be open, and that doesn't seem to be reflected in um in the the wage increase.
In the way.
In the, yeah, because the wages are only projected to go up one point one four percent.
So that's, that was a placeholder amount. I I predict that it's gonna be probably three percent this year, to be honest. Um, I I don't have that on uh confirmed authority, but I know that the unions um. Uh, are gonna use inflation to, as far as I know, to discuss uh things that are more reflective of the actual reality. On the street. So the that's where the board would decide you wanna follow them and then that number would change with.
Do you think you should ask for more service hours for the branches?
We we did compare to last year of our. Uh, it's something like twenty five thousand. Andrea estimated, I estimated, and we compared and it was, we're within forty hours of each other, and it was slightly higher than last year.
Okay.
My next point about uh programming hours, like I am coming to ask for more hours, I just.
Yeah, that's next on the.
Okay, but but that's not hours for libraries. Oh, that's just programming hours within the existing hours.
Yeah, right now we're having a hard time staffing branches because we haven't got a full uh group of people. But we would like, I mean, yes, we can open more branches for a longer period. That's what you'll find in the guidelines. Um, given a system of our size, but there there are considerations that I I just. I don't know, I don't know if I wanna make changes, not knowing what eighteen months or two years might bring if. If we're downsizing branches. Probably on the table.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
I'm done, yeah, that's my question, yeah.
Jennifer has the band up.
What did you say? Just that last bit, i- i- if we're downsizing, you think that there's a, would you just repeat what you what you said?
So in the event that um and this is a hypothetical hypothetical from what I gleaned from Cease when we asked last last board meeting. That if they were to build a a a central uh certain municipal services location that they might divest of municipal buildings.
In Highlands East, got it.
Ailey, Goodrum, probably Cardiff. And then if that's the case, we would actually have to find places to put staff. Otherwise, we'd be laying people off. So I I'm reluctant to add when I don't know what's gonna happen, but. I'm I'm a a personal advocate for more is better. I like, you know, twenty hours in Stanhope and, you know.
So would I, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But it really, I mean, it's, it's at the pleasure of the board, like where where you feel you wanna go. I just feel like it's been eight to ten years since we sat down and had a discussion about what the service standards look like and. Lo and behold, we just published what they should probably look like for um a library of our type, which is a county system. And and I think there just needs to be a bit more direction for the CEO about.
Yeah.
What it looks like.
Jennifer?
Yeah, no, so that's that's really helpful and I I wanna reach through the screen and pull that document and start to start looking through it. Um, because it it is, I I don't wanna say it's chicken and egg, but. I would also love to see some more hours in Stanhope, but not just for having it open. I, you know, what what can we do to really reinvigorate the usage of the Stanhope branch? And that's where the hours would go is towards that reinvigoration. So I think it really, it real bo- really boils down to that document there. Um, you know, what could that service look like and how can we bring faces in?
I can send you a digital copy of this uh because it's on their website.
That'd be great.
Um, Cease, did you have a question?
I just have a small, small update regarding the uh the way we're building our building. Uh, there's still a plan to go forward, but that that argument's not on the table, but unfortunately. Uh, when the proposal came to council for us, which was Tuesday just passed, for the uh design and oversight of it. It was just a number that we could not live with. And so consequently, uh, we're looking at an alternative now for how to design and. The oversight or general contractor for the project. So it's still on the books, it's still gonna happen. The urgency is as real as it was before. It's just we've had a small setback and that we're not going to be pursuing the particular uh. Architect that we had originally thought we would.
Thank you.
Andrea? For both of you on Zoom, I've just sent a digital copy of me the X.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, are you finished with that?
I am, and I'll get information for uh the board about where the EU resources uh money and where it shook out. We just got this information confirmed today from Aaron about the consortium costs.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
I have a motion then that says be it resolved that the Calveron County Public Library, Cal- sorry, Calveron County Library Board. Accepts the copy of the ACPL draft for twenty twenty four. That one mover please. Jackie, seconded by Paul. Any questions? Anybody opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, Chris, now we're gonna try to go to eight point two about increasing the monthly program programming hour.
Yes, alright, so yes, thank you. In the spirit of um.
And Adele, this may make it into some of your questions.
Yeah, so uh for two years, we've had um, you know. Built back momentum and if you look at our collections, we didn't really talk about it, but in the consent agenda, the collections, circulation numbers. Their 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 neck and neck was pre-pandemic uh period. Um, and similar with programming, we're starting to have um. You know, nine hit nine hundred and almost a thousand uh kids coming in a in a typical summer month. So we know, we have the stats to back up that programming is 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 building. We also know that with the new van, we have ambitions to get the programming. Out in a way. So in order to facilitate that, um, we were operating with the same bank of hours that we've always had, which is fifty dot fifty hours per month. Uh, for the entire system. And what's happened according to uh our programmer Hillary is that we keep hitting the maximum every every month. And she's having to say, no, we can't do this and having to make more choices about where we go. So. Given that we had worked out on the library's side, uh a neutral or status core budget again uh. With surpluses, although you can't count surpluses because it's not sustainable. Um. The one ask that we did put together as a package is to come to the board and ask, could we uh consider increasing that fifty hours per month? Say fifty five, maybe if you wanted to to prove further that the numbers that we put in energy in or money in and you get this result. Twelve hundred people come in the summer months uh or up upwards of sixty hours, which would be preferable to um. Hillary, given that we hope to have two summer students and then someone to help, you know, work with them and and make things happen. So. So on the table is the potential for um. So the an extra five hours per month or an extra ten hours per month to um not only maintain the program that we're doing, but also uh build it up. That much further. And there are financial implications, obviously. Um, it's about two thousand dollars uh for every five hours that you add per month. Um, but again, you put that two thousand dollars uh into the system and then we have uh an increase in staff. Like we know that uh not only because the programming has been building momentum, but because we have a marketing and uh. Promotions coordinator who is working in tandem with Hillary and myself and the whole inventory team to like get the word out and so it's it's working. Um, and we now know after two years that uh we're on a trajectory that, you know, should you wish to support it, I think it'll continue to to grow. So that's my best pitch for increasing. Uh, I I'm not sure when the last time the fifty hours would have uh been developed, but it's probably stayed with that number. Uh, but I would conjecture that it was around the time that we were doing Makerspace activities and we had a, for the first time, a programmer uh role at the library.
Chris, what what would you recommend, five or ten?
So I know like Hillary is like, man, she can really do a lot. She can juggle many places at once and plan things, but she can't do it all herself. We can't certainly, we'll see that we're always gonna have student help in the summers when we're busiest. Uh, we hope to. Um, but uh in order to harness the ambitious uh new staff that we hired.
Yeah.
Who have told us that they would like to do, uh, you know, their their great idea that they're coming to us with or um storytimes. We don't wanna discourage them by saying, no, sorry, you come to us early and enough in the month and we're we're already at forty eight hours and. Can't we can't say yes. So ideally, ten hours allows us to um say yes and and make things happen.
And then build around those ten hours.
Yeah, if it doesn't work next year and it's it's a disappointing increase and you can just go back.
Adele?
Could you explain how again how the money works?
Sure, yeah. So basically, we estimate um uh. Uh, a wage for um a a branch staff, which is between twenty four and forty seven dollars an hour, plus a little bit for the benefits, so the. Whatever cents um for staff holidays and whatnot and other benefits that might like ulmers and all that. And it can come to a figure of about thirty dollars and fifty cents. And then we multiply that by the five hours by twelve months. Um, for the year and that's around two thousand dollars. So we need to.
So um two thousand dollars buys you five hours?
Five hours per month.
Per month, yeah.
Two thousand dollars a year.
For the whole year?
Yes. Yeah, for uh for five hours.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to go.
Four thousand.
Yeah, it's four thousand.
Okay.
Every five hours per year uh per month for the year, the two thousand.
Well, it would seem to me that if we have a a a programmer, a staffer, maybe hired to do programming. And we don't give her either punch to program. Um, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me that, you know, we should, this is pretty straightforward. I think we should allocate some funding.
So to be fair, um, as I pointed out, Hillary's budget with the new film license did go up.
Yeah.
Um, so she's asking for this other increase, but it's, I mean, the money doesn't go to fund her. She's already working at a. Full of thirty five hourly capacity. She's very busy, but what it allows her to do is to dispatch. Uh, others who have stepped up and say, I've got a great idea for a program, can I do it? And she doesn't, she's it's getting harder for her to say yes to. You know, insisting to people, so.
Okay.
Hmm.
Uh, so it just it creates agency for her department and basically allows us to proliferate programs in more places. If it's working in one place, then we can run it elsewhere.
So would you need a motion for that, something?
So, hi, so David, I gave you a blank motion in case you guys decide. Yeah, so you can write it up because I didn't know what verbiage you guys wanted.
Yeah.
So let me pose a motion here that we increase the monthly pool of program by by yeah.
Up by ten hours per month?
Yeah. The maximum of four thousand. So that's a motion. Anybody have a question about that motion?
Question, let's ask Chris. So um.
Some of your salary has.
Well, there there's room, uh, actually, yes, a fine point. There is room this year to make it effective immediately if you want to. And then uh. The stats, you'll have that for the end end of the year, but really uh in the new year, it's, you know, it just means that.
Why don't we say affect in November first? That fair? Okay. This will be gone, then we got automated and then we find somebody else.
Okay, well, that's a good use rather than putting it into surplus and.
Okay, we have a motion. Any questions?
The only thing I wanted to say is that this decision, uh, just to remind you, is uh is a decision that means that the budget for the library will. From this point forward, be four thousand dollars more. Yeah, each each time.
Yeah.
But I just like sometimes people are like, oh, it's just for now.
It's like a, it's like a base funding or increase for asking for it. Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion. Everybody heard it? Any further questions? You have a mover and seconder please. Adele moves, seconded by Jen. Okay.
Thank you.
Chris, did you write that down?
Yes.
On that motion?
Yeah.
So I'm just going to fill a report here and sign it and all that stuff and even put your words in, okay?
Okay.
All right, okay. Let's move on to, uh, thank you very much, everybody. Review, review of branch hours and fees and each day. Holiday hours, business and hours and that.
Right, so- Okay, so every year at this time, we, um,
And I think we have some.
Yeah, if you, uh, scroll down in your package, there is like a calendar with Christmas lights along the top and, um, every year we, uh, we come to you around this time to just tell you, uh, as per, um, what the county's doing and what we normally do, that we're closed for certain days, uh, such as Christmas Day and Boxing Day, um, and that will open regular hours for the remainder of the week, including those Saturdays. So that's, uh, meanwhile, administration office closes down between the twenty-fifth and the first of January. This is, uh, um, something that, um, you know, in, uh, is, um, we put it out here against the same time.
Yeah.
So nothing's really changed. Uh, I don't think, do you have anything to add, Andrea?
Not about the hours.
Okay.
The hours have been the same as long I've been around.
Yeah. But what has changed is, um, the, the recommendation for fees. So we put a, a fee structure in here as well, just above it.
It's twenty-one of that.
Um, yes, twenty-one, thank you. And those numbers are good and they're working for us, especially the photocopying, which is generating that revenue that you're, you're starting to notice in our revenue section. Um, but we forgot to include, uh, the, the radar detectors because we were launching them later in the year and did so on August, October, uh, third. Um, and so they recommended, um, uh, cost to replace them for, you know, uh, shipping and tax and labor to get them back out there is a hundred and fifty dollars. So, uh, we were going to make an amendment to this, if it works for you, to include radar detectors.
At a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got a motion and I'll put that number in on. The motion moves reads, be resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts the update of the fees to include radon screeners for the fee of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Can we also include, um, the hours?
Yeah.
Holiday hours? Yeah, so maybe accepted the update of the holiday hours.
Yeah, you don't have a special motion for that, but I can accept the update of these for good, uh, uh, to include radon screeners with a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars and-
And that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts the holiday hours presented.
Okay. Good. And there was something else you wanted to record?
No, that's fine. I was too.
Okay. Moved by Adele, seconded by, uh, Lisa. Lisa and Adele. Anybody opposed? Carrie.
Yeah.
Now we're going to go to up here. Facility draft report. That was quite a report.
Yeah. It's, it's really full. Um, and, uh, kudos to, um, Paul.
Yeah.
For his, uh, it's really, he's doubled it in size actually because of his contribution.
Yeah.
So it's good. Um, it's a, 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 a close look at, uh, Minden Branch in particular. I, I had met with Paul and I'd done a tour as well, so he was, uh, good about putting it all in, uh, to writing. This is a single space. This is a lot of information. So, um, what, uh, I mean, I can answer questions and, and give you an overview if you want, but what I, I will hope for today is that you'll accept it for information so that I can present it to the county, uh, C, or not the county C A Os, the municipal C A Os, because as Jennifer pointed out, it's budget time and, uh, this, this represents a bit of a wish list for needs, uh, capital needs and investment in, in the facilities.
Yeah.
I may need to make plans based on misinformation.
Yeah. For the new members of the board, if you're not aware of this, the obviously the municipality owns all the buildings. We operate the buildings, so to speak, and then we're, we're the tenants, if you want. And so we keep an eye on things in the building that need repair. And this is what this report does. It kind of gives the, gives us the opportunity to advise the municipal staff, the building staff, what is, what it seems to be. And at the same time, they don't have to run around checking every day. We kind of feed that information to them. And then it's up to them, the, the billing departments in each of the municipalities to take action for it. Sometimes they have to put it into the budget, of course, their budget to get, uh, the funds approved for it, but it's ground on an annual basis. This is not meant to be a crit, crit, criticism or critique. It's really two organizations working in tandem, us and the building departments and, and the municipalities.
I couldn't have said that any better myself. That's absolutely true.
The only reason I can say that is because I used to run a city and I-
Yeah. Yeah, and it's budget season. Like everyone's having these discussions and, um, it's important to sort of footnote or flag.
Yeah.
Um, what is matters. So, you know, a lot of things, uh, might not get done right away, but they could be phased in. So in the case of our stamped concrete that's to come, hopefully next year outside of Dizart Branch, um, they're going to be doing a cold patch to just get us through to that point. So they do listen to what we advise and then it's really up to them to take, you know, prioritize it and take action from that. Um, but we thank you to, uh, Andrea Brown for, Keen and I, a really good, um, data mining project of going back into emails and putting together the whole timeline for the year of what we, um, noticed, what we had changed through workplace inspections and follow-up reports, and then putting, bringing it all together in one spot. There, you know, like I said, there's a lot of information. If anyone has any specific questions about locations or query about it.
Okay, I have a motion that says be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library approves the facility report and that the library board approves the CEO, chief librarian to present the facility report to all municipal C A O.
I had a, an item that I wanted to have added to the report. Something that maybe I've been overlooked, but in the summer in Minden, there was an incident where some persons were unauthorized, had access to the electrical panel at the library and they shut the, the power off. And I don't think it's secured. So, um, unfortunately, because in the summertime, well, not fortunately, but it resulted in, uh, the fridge going down and some food being spoiled. So it was fortunate that it was the summer. If it was winter time, the heat would have gone off and a number of other things. Yeah, I understand.
Oh, yes. Well, it's not necessarily panel. It's, uh, uh, a trip switch. Yeah, and, um, yeah, there was some activity that got into this, uh, area that's fenced off. Um, but now there's a, a better lock on that. So the first step was to just prevent access. Next step is to build a box, if they're allowed to, around this handle. It's, it's designed to be in an emergency, like shut off and the fire department shows up, they need to shut that power off so it's not going to, uh, explode or something.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to defer to the, the wisdom of the, of Johnny, the stone that's going to help us. But, um, thanks for, we'll amend, we'll amend this to include that. I did follow up because, uh, Paul told me about it earlier in the week and I followed up with Shannon, um, Kelly from that store and cultural center. She sent me a picture of the, the padlock and the path.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we'll add that.
Okay, we have a motion then. Could I have a mover and seconder please? By Walt. Seconded by Jackie.
Apologize, I have to leave. Sorry. Yes, you're at five o'clock.
Thank you.
It's one of those days.
Been there, done that.
Y'all, they say we're sharing.
Yeah.
And when do you-
Twenty seconds by last day of the time, so.
Yeah, let's say it's, that's no strange reason, let's see.
Okay.
I gravitate to the great job that you have.
Appreciate it.
Uh, happy to be here. I'll, I'll decide to go.
See you, Walt. Anybody opposed to the motion? Carrie, thank you very much.
Sorry, who was it? We'll move on.
I, uh, moved by, by, by Walt and signed by Jackie.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just to remind you that I'm going to, um, as part of the facility report, next step is I'll send it out to more minds with the highlighted sections from that particular scale and then as their treasurer's conversation.
Okay. Um, so ask, um, Andrea, you're going to give us the update on the, uh, board evaluation?
We are, um, have a meeting next week.
Yeah. Okay. So Andrea and I are going to need to discuss repairing the board evaluation document. Um, taking the last one that was done, which was an update from a long time ago. There's still some issues on the last one. We're going to take a look at those and we'll report back and forth. Okay. Okay.
Great.
Now, we're going to have a presentation.
Melanie.
Melanie, Melanie with the really cool headphones is going to give us the presentation.
Melanie, you're on, uh, you're on mute still.
Not for long.
Okay, there. Sorry, I was just finishing my notes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Aaron, are we good? Okay. So hello, I'm Melanie. I am the administrative support coordinator for the Halliburton County Public Library. Um, next, thanks. Some of the responsibility I have is answering public inquiries, coding and submitting invoices, ordering and distribute, distributing supplies, creating the branch staff schedule along with Andrea and Hillary, Hillary, processing incoming mail, minute taking, preparing and publishing library board packages through Civic Web and managing electronic files along with some other duties. After starting at the library, I took it upon myself to implement a new filing system called TomRIMs to help staff navigate our electronic files. What is TomRIMs? TomRIMs is also known as the Ontario Municipal Records Management System. And what is it used for? It is used for records, classification system and a retention schedule, which will help in the future with archiving timelines. The Otis system like TomRIMs individuals store and classified the records in their, in a departmental man, manner, which has been done in the past. The system shown in the slide means that there was no consistency, consistency in the way records are being managed and makes it difficult for archiving when archiving is taking place. There is also an issue where one staff member will have knowledge of where a record is stored, but with the retirement of that employee, the memory of the record also retires. Or it is saved in a folder such as Gail's files, which you can see here. Um, Gail's folders in, sorry, in Gail's folder, there is a list of other folders such as health and safety or invoices. These obviously shouldn't have been in her. These obviously would have been from her time at the library with, but with TomRIMs, everything is saved in an appropriate folder and will not be saved in employees' personal drive. When coming to the library, I noticed instantly that the file system was troublesome. Files were being saved in multiple folders to allow access to these files because branch staff didn't have access to other folders for privacy reasons. With TomRIMs, certain staff categories will only have access to certain folders to be sure privacy and confidential records are only accessed by management or administrative staff. All staff members will have access to all folders that are labeled general. For example, A double zero administration general or F double zero finance and accounting general. Certain staff will then have access to other folders like below, so um, like scheduling, our admin staff has access to scheduling. Um, and then also some have access to development and training, but that would be our admin staff only. And then human resources, human resources only management have access to the employees' records folders. Our new filing system is the same style as the Halliburton County Office Retention Policy. This will ensure files are being destroyed when scheduled. This will allow archiving to be more effective also because we are saving files within the years. So instead of going to each folder to find an archive, archival file, we just look for the year within that subfolder. And as you can see, it is still a work in progress and we still have a lot to be moved into the TomRIMs filing system. But this will help us when the county as a whole switches to the new records management system. The library will be ahead of the game as well. They will now be familiar with TomRIMs. Feel free to ask any questions if you have any.
Jack, please.
Um, I'm, I'm thrilled and delighted. This was, uh, my career was, uh, information management and tech autonomy developments and so on. So that, um, my question is, um, did you go back to individuals' hard drives and reclassify the documents that were already there?
So that was up to the individuals to do that.
But she's been got, provided guidance for that because she has been an house expert.
I'm not an expert.
You're in house expert.
Yeah.
Uh, because while, uh, we're trained to do this in libraries, as you know, um, there, there's a lot of time that is involved when like hunting and gathering and that reorganization and, um, Melanie finds the time in between her other tasks. So a huge shout out to, to her. She has transformed the way in which we communicate across the library system. It's been a really important shift and I know that we are ahead of the game because she's part of a committee, uh, with Aaron to, uh, choose, um, an R F P for, uh, the system that they will use throughout, whether it's SharePoint or, uh, something from e-solution. I'm not sure what to expect, but, um, yeah, this is great.
That is great. That is great.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So is TomRIMs, I'm, I'm intrigued. Is it like a paid, not a paid service, but a paid kind of platform that you buy into? Or is it an acronym for a best practice that you've adopted, that you've researched somewhere else?
So I've adopted it actually from Minden Hills. Travis Wilson, my old boss, started doing TomRIMs filing system when I was there. Um, and then I know they were looking at it here because the person that used to do my job had a binder, as I'm looking, I'm sorry, has a binder and it had all, um, all the different folders and what can be saved in there and what is and it also matches our retention. So I just, yeah, it was kind of, it kind of all worked in together, which was kind of nice. Um, but I know all of county is looking at doing this, so.
Just to be clear, what I was saying, um, the R F P is for platforms such as like a Microsoft SharePoint, but what is doing is, um, uh, it's a pro, best practice, like you say, of protocols or standards for how we, uh, weave traces of information in the right places so the next person knows where to find them, uh, standardized.
Yeah, so it's the name, naming convention.
Yes.
So it's, it's, you know, the classic, uh, you know, do you call it a car or automobile or a vehicle or motor vehicle? So have to decide, okay, which one of those terms is the official one? So that's essentially what a records management system does like that. Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's the equivalent of the little boxes that we could pull out and rifle through with the cards effectively.
Although some, all that stuff's still around. It's just automated.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's what I've done a lot with this is I've taken all of their paper records and I've made them all electronic. So we have no paper records being held in the library.
Perfect. Excellent. Okay, any other questions or comments? Um, seeing that, could I have a mover and seconder for this motion be resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives for information purposes, the twenty twenty-three administrative support coordinator's presentation moved by Paul. Seconded by Cece. Cece, great, thank you, Cece. Anybody opposed? Seeing that motions carried. Thank you very much. The next item is the municipal update roundtable. Any comments from our municipal members of the board? Lisa?
I'm just want to go back to the, the, the stuff that was, um, from Minden Hills branch that has been uh, still unrepaired. And I just want to acknowledge that I actually sent you an email a little bit ago, Paul. Um, just to say that that was received and I had wondered if anyone from Minden Hills staff had gotten back to you with your concerns. That question's for Paul.
No, I haven't received any, uh,
No, I haven't received any uh any email or correspondence or call. But I I'm not a daily email checker, but um certainly I'm happy to speak to anybody if they had any questions and. Well, I could. Well, we could sketch what what the priorities are so that it goes back to you for your deliberations for next year.
Yeah.
You check folders uh often, sometimes municipal messages. Just a thought, because they might have responded and uh here.
Well, and and we are in this transition between Director of Community Services and the Director of Community Services is responsible for. You know, that building in that area. So I just uh it it could, it could have gotten missed, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I haven't forgotten.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else from our elected officials? Okay, now, just before we adjourn, this is kind of a a ventus meeting that we're having here today because this is the last time the board will move with Chris. Chris was on his way in a couple of weeks. Twenty?
Uh twenty seconds, my official last day of the grounds, yeah. Yeah, it's coming up.
So Chris, on behalf of the board and please any member of the board, comment. Thank, I wanna thank you so much for what you've done. Uh I was on the committee that hired you way back, with a few others on this board. And um. Boy, what a great decision. That's all I can say. You've done a marvelous job.
Thank you. It's truly been a pleasure and um, you know, I'm not sure what what my library career looks like after this. Um but like I've had nothing but a a a great time working with this community and this team. And uh two wonderful boards back to back, like I really like to, in that sense, so thank you.
Anybody wanting, Lisa, you wanna say anything?
I I would, yeah, I had spoken to Chris personally, but definitely you will be a huge loss. To the library, to the county, but uh completely understand and 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 actually. Glad that you're taking care of yourself and putting yourself first because that's the most important thing. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um Cease, please.
Yep, Chris, I like I'm gonna echo what everybody else says, except I got a loaded pistol and you know I have. I know where you're going. And I actually know the street you're going to. So consequently, you are gonna have a hell of a problem sometime next summer, because you're not gonna know who's gonna knock on your door.
I understand that you you and your wife are a west-hander and an east-hander together in the same house now?
Yeah, you're over on my wife's side of the family. We've debated that already. So she may go on her own and I might not hang back, but I think now since amalgamation, we don't like using that word too often. We're now all part of the same town, so.
All right.
I've lived with her for fifty years, so I think we've buried that hatchet.
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you, everybody. Um I have a motion. Be it resolved at the October eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting at the Halliburton County Library Board, now adjourned. Moved by. Adele, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.